I'd like to call to order the workshop. I know Commissioner Lambert is here. Have we heard anything from Commissioner Warren? I know Commissioners Shoef and Paduzzi will not be with us today. Trying to see Commissioner Lambert's... Oh, she was here. Well, I'm a stickler for time, so we need to go ahead and proceed. Before we start the meeting, we will... There's probably Commissioner Lambert as we speak, yes. We'll start the meeting off with a moment of silence. We lost another police officer to COVID over the weekend, Officer Testa, and so let us have a moment of silence in his honor, please. Thank you all very much, Commissioners. When I hear of service arrangements, I'll certainly pass that information along. Okay, we'll go to the first item on the agenda, which is an update on the West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund. Mr. Frost, are you gonna get this started?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you. And I would like to say, my name is Jack Frost. I'm the Chair of the West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund, and I have the honor and pleasure of serving in that capacity. And I'm here on behalf of my fellow trustees, Captain Joe O'Hern, Captain Troy Marchese, and also Dana Fergakis, and Craig Colley. And I am here with our attorney, Bonnie Jensen, who is also the longtime-serving Chair of our Gulf Advisory Committee. And at this stage, I would like to turn it over to our actuary, Jeff Amrose, to do the basic presentation, as he has for years. I know... I know, Mayor, I'm not sure how many times you've heard Jeff, but it always is new and exciting.
Beauty is in the eye of the beholder. As is new and exciting is in the eye of the... is in the ear of the... But anyway, looking forward to it.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely.
Commissioners appreciate it, and I've been called a lot of things, but new and exciting? I don't know. It's a lot to live up to. Let's see if I could do it. But it is nice to be here with you today. My name is Jeff Amrose, and I've been an actuary for about 27 years now. I've served on your pension plan as the consulting actuary for about 12 years now. So, your pension plan, meaning the West Palm Beach Police Pension Plan. What I'd like to do today is provide a brief overview of the West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund, and, you know, just give you the lay of land, show you what's going on with the pension plan. We did speak last October, and some things have changed, so I want to go through those with you. Keep my presentation to 15 to 20 minutes, and then happy to field any questions afterwards. During also, you know, please feel free to interrupt me and ask any questions as well. You don't have to wait till the end. Some of you may remember, again, I was here last October, and since that time, a lot has changed. You know, the pandemic's gotten worse, gotten better, sort of ridden ups and downs. But the financial markets have been extremely strong. And for that reason, this pension plan has been extremely strong, and gotten even healthier since the last time we spoke. Our October 1, 2020 actual evaluation report shows that the required city contribution in this pension plan is $5.5 million, or about 22% of covered payroll. The funded ratio, which we'll talk... It's one measure of the health of the retirement system, is at 96%. I'd love to have 96% of my home paid off, but I don't. So, it's a very healthy margin. We'll talk more about that soon. These metrics, remember, as of October 1, 2020, when we prepare our October 1, 2021 valuation report, it's going to show more strength. It's going to show downward pressure on the required city contribution, upward pressure on the funded ratio, and there's a lot of other moving pieces, but there's a chance that we will be over 100% funded in our October 1, 2021 valuation report.
Great.
So, it wasn't too long ago that the plan had some bigger issues. In 2014, the required city contribution, which is now $5.5 million, was over $10 million, and it was increasing every...
Is there supposed to be a slide compared to what you're saying now, because the slides are not moving?
Not yet. I'm still giving a little bit of an overview.
Oh, this is... Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
But don't be scared. I'm gonna keep it to 15, 20 minutes.
That's the good news up front.
Just wanted to make sure we were... The visuals were matching the audio. Okay.
Sorry about that.
Take your time.
Yeah. So, just, you know, back in 2014, issues required contribution over $10 million. Funding ratio was decreasing each year, and the level of benefits for the police officers was being reduced because share plan money was going to offset city costs instead of going to their share plan account. Since 2014, there's been very significant changes in the health of the retirement plan. And today, we're going to discuss several things, but two reasons for the... Two reasons for the improved status of the pension plan is the issuance of a $50 million pension obligation bond and extremely strong investment returns. So, the other things that we're going to talk about today, which are on the agenda, page 2 of the PowerPoint presentation, is how is the pension obligation bond worked out for the city? We're going to go through that. We're going to talk about the current level of the required city contribution, what we know about future required contributions for the city. Are they going up, down? They're going to stay the same? And then we'll have a comparison of the West Palm Beach Police Plan to other Florida public safety pension plans. Before we discuss these items, let me give a quick introduction into the pension benefits that are offered in the West Palm Beach Police Plan. So, slides 3 to 8 of our presentation review the plan provisions of the three major benefits that are offered in the pension plan. So, if we turn to slide 3, we see the main pension benefit for police officers, which is calculated by multiplying three things. The first thing is the benefit multiplier, second thing is the pay, and third thing is the service. You multiply those three items together, you come up with the retirement benefit. And the benefit multiplier is 3% for each year, and that applies to after October 1, 2017, and before October 1, 2011. In between that period of time, those six years, from October 1, 11 to October 1, 17, the benefit multiplier is 2.68%. And you... Once you get the benefit multiplier, you multiply it by the pay and the service, and that gets you to the benefit. Police officers can begin receiving their benefit at normal retirement, which is the earlier of age 55 with 10 years of service, age 50 with 20 years of service, or 25 years of service regardless of age. It's also important to note that the members of the pension plan contribute 11% of their pay to help fund the pension plan. Slide 4 reviews the drop program. What is a drop program? Drop program is a deferred retirement option program, and it allows the officers to retire for pension plan services purposes, but still continue to work for the city for up to a period of five years. During this period of drop participation, an officer's monthly pension plan benefit is accumulated and is paid after they terminate employment with the city. The share plan is funded by annual premium tax revenue, which is money coming from the state to help fund this pension plan, and this is on slide 5. The amount of annual premium tax revenue is allocated equally to the active members, provided they all work a full year during that year. The annual premium tax revenue, to give you an idea, in 2021 was $1.6 million, which if allocated equally to all of the officers, would be about $5,500 per officer. Slides 6 through 8 go through numeric examples of the calculation of each of these three benefits. But in the interest of time, there's some things that I think are a little bit more important than this. But if you're going through it and you ever have questions, please feel free to reach out to Jack, myself, Bonnie.
Jeff also has hard copies for you if you would like.
Great.
Thank you, Jack. So, let's go to page... Slide 9. And slide 9 discusses the history of that pension obligation bond that I spoke about earlier. Again, $50 million was deposited into the pension plan in July of 2016. And as a result of the deposit, the funded ratio, which was 82.4% at that time, increased to 97.1%. The amortization payments on the unfunded accrued liability, which is a part of the required city contribution, decreased by $6.5 million as a result of the issuance of the pension obligation bond. If we turn to slide 10, you could see that the issuance of the pension obligation bond has worked out extremely well for the city. So, why do I say that? The investment return on the $50 million that was deposited into the pension plan is $33.4 million as of June 30, 2021, and probably a little bit higher now. But you could see that the $50 million that was put into the pension plan earned over $33 million since it was put into the plan. The city obviously had to pay the bondholders back, but they've only paid $8.6 million in interest to the bondholders. So, that difference, or $24.8 million, is sort of what the city is ahead on when they analyze the pension obligation bond. So, again, to date, that's worked out extremely well for the city.
What is the... When was the bond issued, and when is it...
The bond was issued in July of 2016. I don't know the term. I mean, it's outside of the pension plan, so I'm not sure if anyone else has knowledge.
Is that a 30-year?
I'm not sure.
Can you... One of you just check on that and get back to us, please? So, July 2016?
Correct. That's when it was issued. Yep. And you may be right. It may be a 20-year bond. I'm not sure. So, as discussed before, in addition to the issuance of the pension obligation bond, what else has made this pension plan improve? Well, it's the strong investment returns that this plan has seen. So, you could see the returns are shown on slide 11 for this pension plan. We have the last nine years' returns, and it's averaged a little bit less than 10% per year. Keep in mind, that does come after a period of time where the investment returns were really, really poor, not just for this pension plan, but all pension plans. From 2000 through 2009, the average return was, depending on the pension plan, between 2% and 5% per year. Here, we're at a period of time where we've had nine years that averaged 9 and 1/2, almost 10%, during that period of time.
And to put that into context, the assumption for the fund is that we're going to earn now currently 7 and 1/4% a year. We just dropped it this year from 7 and 1/2 to 7 and 1/4 to be more conservative, and in light of the strong results that we've been getting lately. So, that gives you an idea that if we're ahead of the... If we're beating our assumption, that it's a good thing.
Definitely. Yeah. And thank you for that, Jack.
Although last year, we didn't beat the assumption.
No.
Last two years, we haven't beat the assumption.
Right. But due to the returns the two years before, it brought the average up. So, it really is... I mean, pension plans are a long-term proposition, and you're gonna have a lot of noise year by year. But over the long term, and I think that's Jack's point, for the last nine years, we're almost at 10% per year and significantly beating... And 2012 obviously helped at 23%, then 16%, and 10%. So, we've had, you know, some good years. And keep in mind, probably most importantly, this year is not on the chart, and this year, a lot of pension plans are above 20%. And maybe Jack could provide... I don't know if you have an update on what the plan's return is today?
I do.
Okay.
And currently, we're up about 24 and 1/2%
Wow.
on the year.
Excellent. Okay.
And the fund, the size of the fund is now $492 million as of the end of August. We're shooting for half a billion.
Now, that obviously will bring this nine-year return. When we look at a 10-year return, we'll be over 10%, maybe even closer to 11, depending on the next three days, but we're looking very, very good. If we go to slide 13, and you'll see the results. Again, it's outdated a little bit, because these are the results of our October 1, 2020 valuation report. And there's two main components of the required city contribution. It's called ADEC here, Actuarially Determined Employer Contribution. The two parts of that contribution are the employer normal cost and the amortization payments on the unfunded accrued liability. The employer normal cost is simply, what is the value of the accruals each year for your active police officers? And this was $4.32 million, if you look at that leftmost column of figures, where it was 17.44% of payroll. And the normal cost includes the administrative expenses, which is what the board pays the professionals to help manage the pension plan. And those investment... Those administrative expenses were $230,000, which represents 0.06% of the plan's assets. And this is lower than most of the other plans that I work on. The second component of the required city contribution are the amortization payments on the unfunded accrued liability. And based on the Florida statute, when there are changes in the unfunded accrued liability, which are our every year, gains and losses, assumption changes, plan changes, that must be paid off over a period of time not to exceed 30 years. And you'll see here, the amortization payments on the unfunded accrued liability are $1.22 million, or 4.94% of covered payroll. So, from this slide, you could see in that bottom two rows of information, the ADEC, or the Required City Contribution, is $5.54 million if the payments are made throughout the fiscal year. But if prior practice follows, the city has been making that payment on the beginning of the fiscal year, and you'll see the required contribution goes down to $5.35 million. Let's turn to slide 16, and this shows future pressures on the required city contribution. What's going to happen? Well, there's a couple of big things that we know. The... There are $10.3 million of unrecognized investment losses that will be recognized over the next number of years. If we recognize these losses immediately, the required city contribution would increase by $880,000. So, we have that upward pressure on the required city contribution. But to counter that, to more than counter that, as of September 15, and this is a little bit dated, the S&amp;P 500 was up 35%, and you'll see that this was, I guess, almost two weeks ago. I was thinking that the plan is probably up 20 to 25%, and as Jack just pointed out, we're up 24%. So, you know, we're... We have a lot of good news to reflect there. And based on if that holds for the next three days, fingers crossed, that, you know, those gains will put more downward pressure on the required city contribution and upward pressure on the funded ratio. Slide 17, the funded ratio. What is the funded ratio? How much of the plan's liability is covered by the plan assets? As of October 1, 2020, the funded ratio is 96%. As of October 1, 2021, provided that return or anywhere near there could hold for the next three days, we will be talking about a higher funded ratio, perhaps over 100%. It's very good. We have 130 pension plans on the team that I serve on in Fort Lauderdale office, and the average funded ratio for those plans in Florida is in the mid to upper 80% range. So, you could see that yours is elevated compared to those. Again, another really good sign. Slide 18 summarizes the results of our actual impact statement that I mentioned earlier, where we're studying the impact of changing that multiplier for that six-year intervening period from October 1, 11 to October 1, 17. We studied changing that multiplier from 2.68% per year to 3% per year. And you can see that will result in an increase in the required city contribution of roughly $325,000. A 3% benefit multiplier for all services closer to the average of other public safety plans in Florida. And speaking of that, slide 19, and I've presented this before, it's useful because it shows a comparison of the employer normal cost from the West Palm Beach Police Plan to other neighboring cities in Florida. And the slide could give you an idea of how the benefit levels in West Palm Beach Police compares to other Florida public pension plans. Remember, the normal cost represents the value of the accruals from your active officers each year. And that's why it makes it comparable from this plan to another plan, and you could compare it, as long as you're taking it as a percentage of pay, you could compare it across cities. Not directly, because there are other things that are different, the assumptions. Not every plan is using the same assumption, so that normal cost is based on assumptions. But this will give you a good idea of where things sit in West Palm Beach Police Plan and other plans, and they're just sorted alphabetically. And you can see that the West Palm Beach Police Plan has a normal cost rate of 17.44% of covered payroll, as mentioned a little bit earlier, and the average is a little bit over 24%. Again, it's not meant to be an exact science, because, you know, there were other moving parts, but it's just really here to give you a guide on how the benefit levels here compare to other neighboring cities.
So, the lower, the better? Lower is better?
That the higher that number, the richer the benefits are that you're providing to the police officers. And here, you could see that at 17.44%, and the average for these plans, which are in Florida, public safety plans, is 24%. And this is before reflecting the 3%...
The lower, the better. The lower is the percentage of the payroll that is being paid.
The lower, the better for the city.
Right.
The higher, the better for the... I guess it's... I'm not sure where...
It depends on perspective.
Exactly. Yes.
Yes. Okay. So, the lower, the better for the city?
Lower, the better for the city. Definitely. Yep. Yes. So, with that, I will turn it over. I think I might have kept it to 15, 20 minutes, hopefully.
No, you did a great job.
Thank you.
And we weren't trying to rush you. I mean, just...
No, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
All good?
Any questions, Commissioners? Is that... Okay. Was that... Yeah, Commissioner Fox. You got it halfway up, and then it's like you went all the way up. Okay.
I have a question about this slide in particular. Could you explain a little bit more about how the percentage... I know that you're saying that the lower, the better for the city, the higher, the better for the employee. Can you explain a little bit how we get those percentages?
Sure. Definitely. And it's a good slide, and it gives a lot of good information. So, let me just explain it further. Let's just say the West Palm Beach Police Officer had one police officer in the plan, and that's it. What this is saying is the city's going to have to contribute 17.44% of their pay every year to fund the benefit that's promised. If we look at Boynton Beach Fire, they're the top one on the slide, their city is going to have to contribute 23.92% of that one officer's pay each year to fund that promised benefit. Obviously, there's more than one person in each plan, but, you know, the average rate is 23.92% for Boynton Beach Fire and for West Palm Beach Police at 17.44%. Does that get to your question?
Thank you. I... Can you explain a little bit about more about how it is determined, though? Do we decide on the percentage, or how is the percentage decided?
You decide on the benefits. We actuarially determine how much the normal cost is, meaning how much would have to be put into the pension plan each year so that there's enough money at the end when the person retires that it will fund that promised benefit.
Great. Thank you.
If you go back to slide 13, I think that might be helpful.
Yes. So, here it is in that leftmost column for... Now, I had an example of one police officer. Obviously, that's not the case, but you'll see that employer normal cost, percentage of covered payroll, at 17.44%. But the payroll for the whole group is almost 25 million, so the normal cost is $4.32 million, which is basically the 17.44% times the payroll of the whole entire group. Sure.
Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation and for your ongoing dedication to this. We really appreciate it. I know that early on, and actually, it might have been around this slide too, we had talked about the investment return assumption and lowering it from the 7.5 to the 7.25. Maybe you could just talk a little bit about what safeguards we have in place, things, you know, how we came about to that, and if there's any others.
Yeah. First, I guess, let me talk about the progress that was made with the investment return assumption. So, I don't remember... Maybe Jack and Bonnie have more... Remember the history better. But it wasn't too long ago, we were assuming 8 and 1/2%. This plan, like many other pension plans that across Florida and across the country, have been lowering that investment return assumption. And we've made good progress as a board. They've made good progress in lowering that. And the purpose to lower it, the assumptions of the plan, whether it's the investment return assumption, we have a mortality assumption, we have assumptions about a lot of things. The assumptions do not control the cost of the pension plan. They control the timing of when the city has to put money into the pension plan. Let me just illustrate that with a mortality table example. If I went into the board and I said, "Hey, I have a new mortality table assumption." It assumes everyone dies at the age of 45. So, what's going to happen? When we do your evaluations, every time someone hits the age of 45, we're going to assume that they die, and there's no more payments. So, the required city contribution's going to go way down. The funded ratio may go up to 150% because we assume people die when they hit the age of 45. However, when they live past the age of 45, what's going to happen? It's going to push that contribution right back up. It's going to push the funded ratio right back down. And that's hopefully exhibits why the assumptions control the timing of the contributions. The plan provisions, the benefit multiplier, the normal retirement date, those control the costs of the pension plan. But the assumptions are really a lever on the timing of when the city has to contribute. That investment return assumption, to your credit, you're talking about that. That's the most important assumption. We've made a lot of progress in lowering that assumption, and, you know, the average of my 130 pension plans that I have on my team is a little bit lower. It's probably around 7%. So, you know, these are ongoing discussions. We don't just say, "All right, well, where we need to be for the next 30 years," whenever talking about it. Again, we talk about this often. We do experience studies to look at the investment return assumption and all of the other assumptions. Every three to seven years, we do that. So, you know, it's a great question, and that hopefully shows you the progress we've made with that. Some plans have made more progress. Some plans have not made much progress at all. And the danger in using an aggressive assumption, whether it's mortality or investment return, is if you assume, let's just say, 7 and 1/4, and the actual return is 6%, we have an unfunded accrued liability, which is a plan for the city to pay that off through the contributions. If my example comes true, and we're assuming 7 and 1/4, but the actual is 6% every year, we're going to pay off... The city's going to pay off the current unfunded accrued liability, but each year, we're going to generate a little bit of unfunded accrued liability. So, that's what, you know, it's very complex, because no one has a crystal ball. No one knows what the return is. But I will say the 7 and 1/4% is in a range of reasonableness. It may be towards the upper part of that range of reasonableness, but it's inside a range of reasonableness.
And it is the trustees who determine what the assumptions are. And a number of years ago, there are a variety of mortality tables. And a couple of years ago, we adopted a very conservative one. And Florida State, the Florida State Retirement System, has now adopted a table that all the local municipalities are required to follow. We were more conservative than that, so when we switched over, the city's contribution actually went down. And also, Jeff pointed out that he's been with us for 12 years, and every three to seven years, we do a review, because you can see he's a wild and crazy guy. And we want to make sure that the numbers are reasonable.
I'm sorry I missed that.
And what we also do periodically, there's what's called an actuarial audit, where you have an independent firm come and review the work that they're doing, all the assumptions, what they have to back it up, and then give us a report on that. And we do that about every five years or so, and they've pretty much... He has not really been out of line. There've been some suggestions.
Yes. Yep.
How do you factor in a 100-year pandemic in your actuarial tables? Is that something you just consider a blip on radar, or you kind of ignore it, or...
It's a great question. In terms of mortality, it's... Adam, I have nothing to say about it. The board has nothing to say about it, because as Jack just alluded to, our hands for all the local pension plans in Florida are tied. We must use the same mortality table that the Florida retirement system uses. And there's a lot of logic behind that, because to study mortality, you need hundreds of thousands of lives to see how people are dying. The West Palm Beach Police Plan doesn't have that. So, the Florida statute makes us use the same mortality table as, you know, for all the local plans. So, I don't think it will be... They're going to control it. They're actually, along with FRS, is going to control what the new mortality table will be. They're going to study it, but I think there certainly will be an impact, yes. And as horrible as the impact is, you know, for everyday life, it will probably result in another change in the mortality table that decreases the required city contribution, because it's going to show that people are dying sooner.
Jack, a question for you. The pension obligation bond has been out since 2016. Has anyone looked at the interest rate we're paying compared to the interest rates where they are now to make a determination whether refinancing might be appropriate, you know?
Actually, that's a great question, because we proved to be incredibly lucky, the timing.
Yeah.
In July of that year, actually, they had... The city had budgeted to put out the bond at 4.3 or 4.4%. And the timing, when it actually went out, we're paying 3 and 1/2% on it. We hit the bottom, and because after that, it started creeping up. And also, that money went in when the market had pulled back, and so we got the best of both worlds. Can't say that we were smart. Better to be lucky than smart, and we were.
So, you're just going to ride it out, then?
Yeah.
Because interest rates are... Because interest rates are still pretty low.
Actually, it's, that would be under your control, because it's your bond that you put out.
Oh. All right. So I'll turn to city administrator, and maybe you and your team might want to think about that, I, I don't know, or at least do the analysis? And I'm not asking for an answer on the spot.
Yeah. I'll follow up, Mayor. Last year, when we looked at the refunding of the city bonds, it was, particularly with the utility bonds, but we did look at all of them. I need to just follow up to see what was the decision when it came to the pension bonds. And I'll get back with you.
Okay. Commissioner Warren?
Jack Frost, you kinda stole, stole my thunder. I was gonna compliment you on your ability to forecast in these great assumptions, because I think this is exactly where we would like to see the, the trend going. So I'm still gonna say, great job in, in forecasting and, and making these great assumptions and ensuring that this, this fund is in a, in the position that it's in, and I'm looking forward to us continuing this positive trend.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox. I'm sorry. Did you wanna respond to that compliment, Jack? And bask in the sun?
Smart enough to just take it.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good move. Good move. Commissioner Fox?
Thank you, Jack. I think this question is for you. On Friday, we were at an event with a groundbreaking where the developers were talking a little bit about how the police, the West Palm Beach Police Pension Fund was one of the funders that was backing the project. And so that's really exciting. I love the idea that we are investing in our own local community. Can you talk a little bit about some of the other things that we're investing in, or how that is decided on, you know, where, where we're gonna be putting the money?
Sure. I could talk very long about that. But just on the grand, which was very exciting, they have affiliated developers have put together a fund, a $100 million fund, which will cover 10 different projects, of which the grand is one. And once they get going, they got initial funding of $25 million, and now they've gotten some financing. We, we advanced $5 million. We committed $5 million to that fund. And you can see it, that is about 1% of our overall fund. But more importantly, we got the number projections that it should be a very good investment for us, giving us somewhere around 11 or 12% a year, and with also the bonus of getting some capital appreciation along the way. And already, the market here, as you know, West Palm Beach has improved tremendously, so I'm knocking on wood that it should be a very good investment. But also, we were, particularly as a police fund, they've had such trouble recruiting. If they can go after new recruits and say, we have affordable housing, Class A affordable housing, one block away from the police station, you won't even need a car. I mean, that, it's really a win-win-win. Other investments, we have equities that are diversified from large cap, mid cap, small cap, value, growth, international. We have about 15% in real estate. We have almost 10% in private equity. And we also have about 20% in bonds. So we're, and we have a consultant, a professional consultant who advises us and does analysis with all sorts of fancy numbers. And they have tried to make sure that we're diversified so that we can gain on the upside, but at the same time, when and if there is a pullback, and there always will be, that we're protected defensively. So we have the consultant, and then we have about 15 different managers, each who handle one of these asset classes.
And, and I continue to press you all on making sure there's diversity from ethnicity in the managers that we are as well. So please continue, not without sacrificing performance, but continuing to see if we can get managers who are from different groups.
Mayor, thank you. And we really appreciate that you advised us to look in that direction, because shortly thereafter, we had our consultant request of all our managers to report on their diversity, and gender, race, whatever. Of course, all different metrics were coming in, but it gave, not only gave us somewhat of an idea of what they have, but also a guideline going forward, because if, if a manager's performing well, you know, we don't wanna just drop them because they aren't-
Understood.
But on the other hand, with us asking them that, they've all come forward and really say, we have aggressive programs out there, we have internships for college students, we have, and doing a variety of things, so, but thank you, Mayor.
If you could share with me some of those responses, that would be helpful.
Sure.
If, I don't know if you have it in a summary, in a document that summarizes those, but I would like to see those responses.
Yeah. And I think there was a one-page one that I could-
Okay.
-get for you. One other comment is, just to put this in perspective, for numbers of what an officer might expect when he retires, he or she retires, if a typical retirement were $60,000 a year, which I think is somewhat conservative, if they're in the drop for five years, that's $300,000 that sits in their drop account, along with the interest that it gains, let alone the income that they've been making as they continued in that service. The share accounts, which now, like, just another $5,000, if they serve 20 years, that's $100,000, add in the interest, so they could have $200,000 in their accounts. So in addition to that pension of $60,000, they will very likely have over half a million. So putting it, to me, as a resident of West Palm Beach, I'm delighted to know that our officers are being well taken care of, and also that kind of incentive to help compete against all the other municipalities, as we know going forward, how difficult recruiting has been.
Yes. Any other questions? Well, this is all good news, gentlemen. Thank you. It's good to hear from you when you have such good news. It'll be good to hear from you when you don't have such good news, but-
Yes.
I'm just saying that. But no, this is, this is excellent, and it sounds like the, the fund is in very capable hands. And thank you, Jack, for all your years of ser- how long you been serving on the pension fund?
I'll just put it this way, we're now at, I'm at $492 million. When I joined the fund, it was 26.5 million.
Wow.
So.
And dinosaurs were roaming the earth. But anyway, oh, thank you, Jack, so much. All right. I don't have anything under Mayor's Matters. Do you all have anything for the good of the body? Okay. Well, thank you all very much, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.